Ladies and gentlemen, we'd like to call our meeting to order. This is the planning board meeting for Thursday, September the 18th, 2025, and it looks like we count somewhere between 55 and 60 people. We want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. Our chairman is out of the country on vacation, so my name is Tom Barrett. I'm the vice chair, and I'll be running the meeting this evening. We've got a lot of folks that I'm sure want to talk, so we're probably going to be here a while, so pack your patience and we'll get started. First and foremost, a motion to approve the agenda for tonight?
Still moved.
Second, okay, on favor? Thank you. Any opposed? All right. Secondly, a meeting to approve the August 21st minutes?
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
All right, on favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Mission passed. Tonight is SUP 2025-01 Hampton Inn Hotel. A little bit about the introduction, about the procedures. As you all know, this is a special use permit meeting. Ladies and gentlemen, a permit review is being held today on the application for Tripp Hospitality USC LLC for a special use permit pursuant to Section 16-4.9 of the Blowing Rock Town Code. Are the board members, any board members who feel that they cannot sit tonight and be impartial decision makers of today's permit review in any party for whom objects to any board member hearing this matter? I'm going to take that as a note, all right? Are there any board members who have received any information concerning this application beyond the information which is in public record? If so, please indicate the information you've received so that it can become a part of today's record.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I have two communications subsequent us receiving the initial packet, questions that were directed towards the planning department. I would like to enter those questions and responses into the record and provide copies to all parties. So Kevin, do you need one? Is the developer here?
Yeah.
Would you like to get, would you like a copy, sir? You're welcome. And just so that there's total transparency, also send a procedural question email to the city attorney. We had a conversation about those procedures. They did not go beyond the questions about procedure, but I just want to make that people aware that we did have that conversation.
Okay. Thank you. Any others? Okay. A little bit about procedures tonight. We're going to start with the staff giving a presentation of the overview of the project, and then the applicant will present second in our process tonight. After each party presents their evidence, there will be cross-examination by the other parties in the case. Also, the board may ask questions at each party or witness. After the parties to the case have presented their evidence, the board may also recognize the testimony of others present at the permit review, which is our audience tonight, who will likewise subject to cross-examination by the parties and questioning questions by the board. Finally, the parties will be given an opportunity to rebut any testimony that's offered in their closing argument. After all evidence is presented, the board will discuss the evidence in the context of the ordinance standards, making findings of fact, drawing conclusions, and then making a decision. So to start with, Kevin, let's go ahead and let the staff report and begin your overview of the project, please.
I'll be glad to, and I'll roll through some slides intermittently, just so we can get a better feel for the site. As you see here, the special use permit is 2025-01 for Hampton Inn Hotel. The applicant is Tripp Hospitality USA LLC, and they're requesting this special use permit for the construction of a 98-room Hampton Inn Hotel and a 200-seat banquet hall within the hotel. The proposed development is located at 986 Ransom Street, which is situated at the corner of Valley Boulevard and Ransom Street. The property is 2.076 acres, currently zoned general business, and includes a vacant brick house. Access to the property is planned via a single driveway on Ransom Street. The property is also in the water supply watershed. This view is pulled out a little bit, this aerial showing the, does this cursor show up? All right, so this is the subject property here, Ransom Street and 321. Zoomed in a little bit, that also shows some water and sewer utilities, and shows the adjacent properties. A view of the street, of the site from 321 Valley Boulevard, straight-on shot there, at the intersection of Ransom Street, looking south, further down on Ransom Street, looking up towards the brick house and the driveway where it currently is located. Looking down Ransom Street, the site being to the left, this is the lower corner of the property, looking kind of south, southeast, looking up towards the site. And again, just up a little bit, showing the site there. This is the existing conditions, shows the brick house, a lot of the trees that are on there that are scheduled to be removed, and then the driveway access there, and then you can see the lone house that's on there is the Sims House here that is accessed off Grove Way. Move to the site plan. Okay. The main entry into the hotel lobby is on the east side of the property near Valley Boulevard. Hotel guest drop-off is available at the porcier with a few parking spaces immediately adjacent. Zoom that in a little bit. So you can see the porcier is here on the front entry, and then I think there's 11 parking spaces scattered around the circle there, and a couple of those are ADA accessible. The remainder of the parking is under the building. There's three parking deck levels that are under the building, and it's accessed through this driveway here on the side, the north side of the building. The rear of the property, which is the west side essentially, has an access drive for fire apparatus, and then at the end of this is garbage collection and a dumpster screening for that. So since the hotel height exceeds 35 feet, the applicable setbacks are from Valley Boulevard and Ransom Street is 40 feet. The standard setback is 20, but because the building height is over 35 feet, it increases to 40 feet. And likewise, the setbacks on the side and rear increases from eight feet, which is standard, to 16 feet. As designed, the project meets the setbacks for the general business. As I mentioned, about access would be from a single driveway here off of Ransom Street about where the gravel driveway is now. Of course, it'll be much wider than that, and DOT would not permit access to 321 because it's proximity to Ransom Street, and I think I included that in the letter from DOT District Engineer or Division Engineer for your, in your packet. To discourage left turns onto Ransom Street, we have a required signage that indicates no left turn. I think it'll be posted across the street as you come out. Address parking a little bit. I need to roll through a few slides to get to that port, that part first. So this is, I believe, the lowest level of the parking deck that is completely underground. I don't think any of this part would be visible. The 98 hotel rooms requires 98 parking spaces, and the 200-seat banquet hall requires one parking space for every four seats for a total of 50 spaces. Overall, the hotel as designed requires 148 parking spaces, five of those being ADA accessible. The proposed hotel project provides 162 parking spaces, 11 of them on the exterior at the entry, and then the remainder in the three-level parking facility. Okay, that is a utility plan, so I'll talk about watershed, impervious surface, and stormwater. With this property located in the WS4 watershed, impervious surfaces are limited to 36%. However, our ordinance also allows projects in general business, central business, and office institutional special intensity allocation that can be approved, that would allow up to 70% of the site to be impervious. When those impervious surfaces are allowed to increase beyond 36%, the stormwater detention requirements are increased beyond the normal. The applicant is requesting this project to get a special intensity allocation of up to 44% impervious, so an increase of 8%. So on this site, it's just a house, gravel driveway, some retaining walls, and it's been there for quite some time. There's some surface water, not really today because it's been dry for a couple of weeks, but other times, there's some surface water that collects in the ditch down in front of the property. There's a little bit of water that collects and runs down through that ditch that is really within DOT right-of-way for the most part. That is piped across the road towards the other side of Ransom Street, and then finds its way down through that vacant site across the road and down through Holiday Inn. But the majority of the water that's going to fall on this site, the parking area, the building, some of this area around it, will be collected and detained, and a lot of that detention would be located here on the drive area, the rear drive area. And then when it's all collected and released at a slow rate, as prescribed by the ordinance, will be piped down here to Ransom Street, and then the pipe extended to this existing catch basin that's on Ransom Street too. So as it be in a closed system, will not be returned to an open ditch, but will be piped to that location. As I mentioned, if they're allowed to go over the 36%, they're, not only do they have to detain water that's on the armored surfaces or the impervious, but also the pervious areas of the site too. So they have to make calculations to accept all that too. Let's go to, that's dumpster screen. Let's go to the appearance of the building and the perspectives. So the four main levels of the hotel, it's in a C shape, or the building is in a horseshoe type of shape. Has a courtyard in the center, and then wings on both sides of that, and the rear of the building opens toward the rear property line, or the building, the courtyard opens towards the rear property line. This shows the, if you're standing on the corner of Ransom Street, that the perspective is the top view. The lower is above the hotel, standing more in front of the Connolly property, which is just south of them. So those two views, that's what you're looking at. So the proposed hotel is essentially four stories from the main entrance level. The building is 50 feet tall, measured from the grade at the primary entrance, so that'd be right at the vestibule where you walk in. The finished grade on the southeast corner of the building, which is going to be this, that's going to be this view. So it's almost like three levels from that side. But, but if you look on the backside of the building, it's a lot more visible, and a lot more of the building is going to be visible on that lower side. So on the rear and the northwest side, nearest Ransom Street, the building will appear as six stories from the base of the wall, and approximately 70 to 72 feet from the ground to the highest point of the roof. What is not seen from the exterior of the building is the lowest level of the parking garage I mentioned earlier, which is completely below grade. So this would be the view, this is the lowest, the tallest section of the ordinance, of the building, and you can see parking deck levels one and two, so still one below that. Does that make sense? So the appearance of the hotel differs significantly, depending on what side is being viewed. The front entrance near Valley Boulevard actually sits about eight feet below the grade of the road of Valley Boulevard from that point, but the back is quite different from Ransom Street. The elevation of the Ransom Street on the lower side of the property is 3568. The base of the lower retaining wall that's outside of the building wall is 3578. The top of the wall is 3589. The base of the hotel wall at that location is 3590, which is going to be this lower corner, and the top of the roof is about 3660, based on the grading plans and the building elevations provided. So with this elevation change, the hotel would have an effective appearance of being approximately 90 feet tall, standing on the lowest side of Ransom Street. To offset this appearance of substantial height, staff recommendation is preservation of nearly all of the existing vegetation on that lower corner or the northwest corner of the property, except where it's required for, and access for utilities or the sidewalk that's planned on that part of the site. And then also require significant trees and plantings in that area between the street and the lower retaining wall. So let me go back to that. So what I'm talking about is everything down in here. All of this, as much as possible. This, keeping as much of that to, not necessarily minimize the height, but offset and buffer the appearance and the perspective from this lower part of Ransom Street. Move on to building materials. So I may just say a few things about the building. So the first proposal that we had was about three years ago, and the architect has made major changes to this building. The first thing we received was just a brick rectangular-shaped building, a pretty standard-looking Hampton Inn. And we worked with them and over three years, I think it is now, and so this is, this is their latest version and what they're ready to move forward with. And so quite different from what was original. The building has no brick, but has like a random ashlar stone-type pattern, and they reflected on these materials. I'll show you that. Board and battening siding, lap siding additionally, and also architectural roofing shingles. The architects have incorporated decorative dormers, large eve overhangs, wood bracket accents, covered porches and balconies on different sides of the building, covered entries and exits, and with also heavy timbers and beams that are incorporated to that design. So back to, these are some of the color palette that they're working with now. And lastly, talk about landscaping. I'll go back to that plan. As I mentioned, preserving that lower corner, also, they're required to have a 16-foot buffer along the west boundary against the back of the neighborhoods and the vacant lots in that neighborhood. Also, the south and southwest corners, that is an opaque 16-foot buffer as well, and preservation of some existing trees that are up in this upper corner, and that's being shown here. And we think as staff that as much as possible as can be preserved, needs to be, needs to happen between this retaining wall along the back of the access drive and the property line. In addition, where the opaque buffer is required, our recommendation as staff would be that those evergreens and trees and shrubs that are planted to provide that opaque buffer, that they be staggered in two rows. And so the effectiveness is more immediate than waiting a few years for them to mature out, but to stagger them in rows, and I think the buffering would be more effective. I walked through these plans, but I could certainly go back and visit and answer questions. In your packet, you receive these plans and the renderings. The material board, everything that you've seen here, you've received. Also, at the time, you received one email that was included in the packet, but then since then, I've forwarded any other emails and letters that I received to your attention. I can go ahead and finish out the rest of the plans, and so these are perspective drawings that have been provided by the applicant. Lowest deck of the parking level, the middle level, I did not include the upper level, I'll think, but there's three levels of parking deck. This shows the main level, entry level into the hotel, the vestibule offices, breakfast area, the event center, which is the ballroom, pool, and then you can see the courtyard, and then there are some guest rooms on this first level. Second level, third level, fourth level. And then that's the roof level. And then there's sections of the building, shows all three. All three of the parking deck levels and the four hotel main levels for occupancy. That's all I have at this point. I'd be glad to answer questions, provide any specifics on anything you might need.
Okay, Kevin, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Questions of Mr. Oathrock?
This is the applicant. Have any questions to start off with? And keep in mind, just questions only, you'll have a chance to present events in a bit.
I'm here to listen, pay attention, and figure out a way to accommodate whatever concerns anyone has, as much as we've had for a long time, and make sure we get it right.
I have a few questions, Kevin.
Good.
Kevin, is there anything in the land use code that speaks to large-scale amassing of buildings? I think we've talked about this before. This is a rather large building. Is there anything?
We do have a section that talks about large-scale retail. That section was written in anticipation of any big-box type of retail, whether it be...
Well, Matt, if I could pick up on that, this is general business, and general business has several permitted uses, hotel being one of them.
Right.
But retail would also be permitted in general business or office.
Yes.
Now, if it was retail, what would be the maximum number of square feet that would be permitted?
I don't know. I'd have to look.
Would 100,000 feet be permitted?
I don't know.
What if it was an office? Do you know what it would be?
There's lots of different factors that would limit the size of the building.
Assuming, assuming you met the height and the setback and the parking requirements, is there a maximum number of, maximum number of square feet?
It's, there's lots of factors that would, one, do you mean on this property?
On this property.
On this property. There's going to be, parking is going to be one thing that dictates, setbacks and building heights and buffers, and then impervious. So all of those things in together limit the size of the building. And so without pulling a number out of the air and saying, yes, that size building, I don't have any way of knowing that.
Well, I don't think you understand my question. Assuming you meet the impervious percentage requirements and the setback requirements and the height requirements, is there nothing that would limit the size of the building, assuming you meet all those other requirements?
All those things do limit the size of the building, but I don't, I don't know how to answer how big a building could be on this lot.
And if that was retail or office?
If it was retail, the section in the code that you may be referring to has additional requirements and has a floor area ratio that applies if, if the building is over, the criteria is 12,000 square feet to 25,000 square feet, and then over that. And if there is a limitation factor, there's a floor area ratio, there's additional buffers, and some other things that would minimize the scale and scope of the project.
What I'm getting at is, if this was retail, which is an allowable use in this particular district, it would be a limit, separate apart from setback in height?
Yes, there, yes, if it's retail.
The building would be limited, but yet for a hotel, it would not be under the code?
That's correct.
Did this applicant secure a traffic study? And I understand that the land use code doesn't require it, but did you ask for a traffic study to determine the impact at Main Street?
No.
Did you ask for a market study to justify the need for another 98 units and 200?
That's not within my scope.
Is it appropriate to ask the applicant questions at this time?
When you get done with me.
Okay, that's why I asked that question. I want to make sure.
Other questions from the board members?
I had a couple more questions.
Sure, please.
Did the applicant indicate to you whether they were going to maintain a van to shuttle guests downtown to avoid the impact, negative impact of traffic?
They didn't indicate either way.
Did we ask?
I did not ask.
Did we ask the applicant whether they would be willing to provide additional parking downtown to compensate for the additional vehicles that are going to be going downtown?
No, that's not in my scope.
Did we ask how many staffers required to operate a hotel of this scale?
No.
Oh, that's one more.
Okay, please.
Kevin, do the, under our ordinance?
Kevin, do the, under our ordinances, do the sight line and distance requirements of the entrance exit meet, or does this meet those requirements? I think it's Appendix C of our ordinance.
I don't know.
Certain distance from 321, a certain distance, I know if you're driving down Ransom Street, it's, there's a sharp curve.
Right.
Does it meet those requirements?
I don't know. The, their engineer may have more answers to that. It might, good one for them.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a couple more questions?
Yes, you may.
I want to go back to the land use code as it relates specifically to hotel number of units. You say there really isn't, not anything in the code that gives any guidance as to how many units in a hotel are appropriate for a two-acre parcel, other than your setback and your height and your parking limitations?
Right, there's not a separate section that says this is the right amount of rooms for this size piece of property. There's a, there's one thing that would limit, it doesn't limit, but if a hotel is over 99 rooms, it's got to be reviewed by the state. So that's why most are not.
So here's, if I'm, I don't want to put words in your mouth, you're saying then, under the code, it's kind of subjective. So are 200, 200 rooms too many, 98 rooms too many, 75 rooms too many? That's two-acre site. It becomes a little subjective.
That's what y'all decide. Yeah, I don't, we, we review the plans based on the criteria that's in the code.
Well, I have a couple more questions, if you don't mind.
Please.
Just get it all out there. Now, I understand that the, I read the letter from the DOT, and I understand they didn't want it right turn in, right turn out because of its proximity to Ransom, because there's another curb cut pretty close going south. Did, to you announce, or I'll ask the applicant, did you meet with the DOT after that letter? How many meetings did you have with the DOT? Did you appeal that letter? I'm just wondering, you know, I would not take no for an answer.
Let's let, let's address those when he, it's his turn. Okay, let's finish with Kevin. Any other questions for Kevin?
I have a couple.
Okay, sure.
Has the town done any studies? I understand the applicant has, but has the town done any studies or speed cameras, et cetera, of traffic volumes on Ransom Street?
No.
No?
Other than speed?
Speed.
Which I think quantifies the amount of trips.
Are there records of that? I'd love to get a copy of that. I'd love to get a copy of that separate from this, I know you can't do that right now. What about wrecks on Ransom? Are you aware of any wrecks on Ransom Street in the past five years, other than the drunk driver?
That's a question for Chief Curry.
Are you aware of any issues with the one-way in, one-way out that is in place at Embers on Morningside?
I'm not aware of any issues. Other questions? Okay, Bill, please.
I noticed on the site plan, there were some changes, and it looked like one change added curb and gutter. Is, or was it vice versa, curb and gutter were taken out? Those were, I like to hear this.
So the plan that's, this is the latest plan that shows.
Yeah, literally.
So tell me what you're asking, Bill.
If, if curb and gutter was added, does that not lower the impervious requirement to 24%?
The criteria just talks about in areas without curb and gutter or with curb and gutter. So it currently doesn't have curb and gutter. I don't know if that changes. I've not been faced with that before. I mean, it's in an area on Ransom Street that doesn't have curb and gutter, but 321 has curb and gutter.
But the project has curb and gutter.
But the project adds curb and gutter. And the project adds curb and gutter to direct their stormwater.
Yeah, I mean, it wouldn't change the fact that, I mean, either way, they would need the 1070.
That's right.
Which brings up my next question. If, well, they will, but since they're using the 1070 provision, if there's a perennial stream nearby, there's a 100-foot vegetative buffer around that, do we know if the stream right across the street, which is the middle fork, is how far that comes up toward this property, and if that 100-foot buffer impacts it?
No, it does not. The middle fork turns at the ABC store and goes underneath by the fire department. That's, that's the, that's the middle fork. These are just tributaries and they're intermittent streams. Today, there's no water. Probably back first of August, there was water. But they're not blue line streams. So by the, by the ordinance, has to be a blue line stream shown on USGS map to even have a 30-foot buffer. And that does not occur here.
And that, well, since that was put in our code, that may have changed in the state Found a letter from Vision Water Quality, how to identify intermittent and perennial streams. And there's a whole process, I mean, it's above your, our pay grade to try to identify what a perennial stream is now, but I'll give you that memo. Says, in addition, the micro-invertebrate data that may be used to identify perennial streams. So that's, it's more than, it's now, you and I just used to look at USGS map, and if it was a blue line, yeah, it was a perennial stream. Now, it's a lot more involved. So that puts the burden back on the applicant to try to identify and tell us what is a perennial, perennial stream.
Right.
And I'll give that to you. So that's just a question.
Okay.
For the applicant. And you and I also talked about Mountain Ridge Protection Act, and kind of wanted to get that in the record. That was back in 1983, and it's still in effect from the ridge 100 foot in elevation down, which would affect this property. The crest, the nearest crest is the Hamptons at 3648. So 100 foot below that would be 3548. The base of the hotel, as you indicated, was 3590. So it would lie within that 100-foot range and would be regulated by this Mountain Ridge We feel, we've talked about it, we feel confident that it's not in violation of that act because the height of the hotel would have to be 35 feet above the crest. And right now, it's about 12 foot above the crest. So it's, it should be okay. But it'd be nice to get that also from the engineer. Third issue, access. Can you put the existing conditions back? It's real confusing when you look at right-of-way. There's three property lines there along Ransom. One's in the center, and then you have two more, which is a strip that DOT purchased when they widened 321. So according to the surveyor, there is no public right-of-way on Ransom. It's, it's just a.
That's accurate.
Yeah. It's maintained ditch to ditch and, you know, whatever. As a part of this project, the, I think the applicant needs to dedicate right-of-way for Ransom Street, or put a cul-de-sac down there for the neighborhood and cut them off. So through traffic would not go onto Ransom Street. So that, that would be a choice. And that's up to City Council. Probably the residents on Ransom Street would much prefer a cul-de-sac than, than solving the right-of-way problem.
I think we prefer it not to be there at all. In lieu of that.
That's all I got.
Well, while we're talking about Ransom Street access, I don't want to dwell on it, but did the Holiday Inn, back when it was approved, they were denied access as a condition, is that true?
Yes, it was. And still is. We forgot about it, right? And Stella Donalds were the two that made sure that there was no encroachment on Ransom Street. Because we all had children at the time. School buses go up and down Ransom Street.
If we could, everybody's going to have a chance in a little bit to say something. So let's try to preserve it for that part of the evening.
Let me follow up on that. So Holiday Inn did have a condition that they were denied access to Ransom Street. Now, I understand they do have access on 321. In dealing with the DOT, it was not clear to me whether they were talking about right turn in, right turn out only, or if they would consider access via Ransom, but egress onto 321. In other words, did anybody ask DOT, to your knowledge, whether they would allow the exit to be not an entrance, but just an exit onto 321? Because that also would resolve part of the problem of traffic on Ransom.
Yeah, there'd be a question for the applicant. He'll have his opportunity this minute. Any other questions?
One more question for you. You mentioned, and I think the northwest corner, it will appear as 90 feet in height from the lowest point on Ransom, and you're recommending vegetation to shield that? Is that existing vegetation? Is that evergreen vegetation that would keep its leaves through the winter?
All this, and, you know, anything that's down that lower corner, where there doesn't have to be a sidewalk as shown, or where utilities, like there's a drainage connection coming out of the detention pipe coming out to the street, where that doesn't have to be involved. Staff recommendation would be to leave as much of this as possible and restrict. Just, even though they're just, you know, they're not identified as anything 18 inches or greater. That's what's shown on the plan, that's what's required. But, I mean, there's some small scrub trees, but there's value in keeping as much of this as possible for buffering.
To buffer 90 feet in height?
No.
Do you know how tall, do you know how high that pole is?
This pole?
Yeah, approximately.
Probably 35 feet. The, the corner of the hotel from this point is about 120 to 130 feet. So it's not, it's not there, it's back. But just understanding the, the impact and being at this location, seeing the backside of the hotel.
Now, I understand the building would be sent back from, from the road, but did you do any sight line study to see whether you would be able to lock the appearance of the 90 feet just by maintaining this existing vegetation?
Study?
Sight line study?
No, I didn't do a study. I just walked out there, walked the site. I've walked the site 15 times probably in the last three years, but just thinking of the perspective from being on that end. Anything else for Kevin? Any other questions?
Any questions for the applicant? If you have any questions for Kevin before we.
Fine. All right. So you're going about, you're going to have shrubs that are 90 feet high, and really, I think the effort keeping the vegetation is there is more of a buffer than it is, you know, screening, visual screening. But, you know, our intention is to achieve as much of that as the staff has recommended vegetation, not only in this area, but other areas as well. So I don't have any questions, but I'm just waiting here to hear the feedback. And you can see I've taken a lot of notes, and there's been some good ideas brought up in regards to, I assume, NC dot work to get that in, like, you know, things like that. You know, we're going to pursue whatever qualifications that are needed to get the best quality development for the town.
All right. Well, before you get to that, if there's no other questions, Kevin?
Is it not appropriate to ask questions of the applicant at this point?
We're going to give him.
Not right this.
Are you going to present?
Any other questions or discussion? I don't, I don't have anything else. Wait for the applicant.
Well, there's no questions from the.
We, you will have, after his presentation and any remarks and evidence that he presents, you all will have an opportunity to speak, certainly.
But during that period of time, there, it won't be like a Q and A session. So you can deliver information and say what you want to say, but you won't be able to ask the board or ask the applicant specific questions.
That's right.
He's in the bathroom. He's in the bathroom. Want to ask?
We apologize for the delay.
Mr. Chairman, if you have a five-minute recess if you want.
Let's, let's do this, let's have a, let's have a five-minute. As a representative for TRIP Hospitality, do you have any other additional evidence you'd like to present or comments you'd like to make tonight? Yes. If so, we need to have you stand at the podium at the microphone, please.
Okay, is it on?
It's on.
Okay, so I'm going to do my best to talk loud. I've been asked that, I have that same issue, being able to hear. So far, you know, I'm hearing many of the sentiments that were expressed in the communications that I received, that the residents sent in. Mr. Kennerly's here, an engineer, and has seen and heard all of what's been said. I just asked him some questions pertinent to issues that were brought up with regards, for example, having to exit out onto the 321, and there's very logical explanations why NC dot won't allow that. He's mentioned that there's some alterations that can be made that would sort of cover up another floor of the parking facility, which would affect one side, the visual, the visual on one side. You know, we, again, there'll be more comments that weren't mentioned, I know, because there were some in the letters, and I'm writing down the notes here about perennial streams and various things that I want to educate myself on. And so we want to get as much information as we can in case there's some alterations that we can make that will make, that will mitigate some concern. So again, I'm here to listen.
Okay. We'd also like to give our board a chance to ask any questions of the applicant while you're here. Okay?
Yes, sir. I'd like to know who TRIP Hospitality USA actually is. I've done some searches, and I can't find much information except what was on the initial application. Could you tell me who we're dealing with?
You know, it's a development group. They develop different projects. They've done projects in Irving. You know, they're not, they're not hotel specialists, they're depending on the hospitality by Hilton organization to provide them all of what they need with regards to get this done, even though this is going to be a much different product than what they usually support, because we wanted to, at the staff's direction, have a look and a feel more accustomed to the area. And of course, it's a 98-room hotel, which in some context is a large hotel, although hospitality industry, for example, where I live is the largest industry in town, and we have hotels that are 5, 6, 8, 900 rooms. Of course, we have international airport right next to us and all that. But we understand how the town wants to maintain a certain feel, and we're trying to accommodate that in the best way that we can.
But does your development group, do you have experience with a hotel this size?
I'm a development consultant. I have experience with all types of different developments. This particular development group, I believe, has experience.
So you're hired, you were hired by TRIP Hospitality as a consultant, correct?
I was hired by the architect.
Is architect here tonight?
No, Greg, Greg couldn't make it. We have the engineer here tonight. Greg is a great guy, great architect, and these engineers are geniuses as well. But you never want your doctor doing your taxes, so Greg will commonly come in, call me, and ask to help, because he knows that one of the things I was known for when I was mayor of Irving was that I took care of the residents. And I always told developers, and I've told this developer, that we're going to need to do first what staff tells us to do, and do it when they tell us to do it, and we're going to have to make sure that the residents understand that we hear what they're saying and make alterations as best we can. There's some things we can't resolve, some of this is flat out against a hotel, that's problematic for us to solve. But, you know, I've got some ideas here, I've heard about the hotel across the street and the condition that it's in, you know, this developer, I'll recommend you go over and buy that hotel, get rid of that thing, okay? Because we're coming in with a quality product here, and I'm hearing that what's across the street is not quality for various reasons. So, you know, it's kind of what I'm here for, is to see where there's an opportunity to have solutions that really make a difference, and are not just some developer fancy talking about their project.
Do you, do you have any information, I asked this earlier, about how many folks it would take to staff this hospital, or this hotel?
I've heard it could be from 80 to 120 employees, probably on the lower side. And then that begs the question that was brought up by one of the residents to me about workforce housing, that there's an issue with that. So that's another component. Again, I'm here to take notes to see where can a contribution be made in that regard? I don't know. I've heard various ideas, but we actually have that same problem in Irving, nobody can afford to live there, and we've got, you know, 85 hotels and 20,000 hotel rooms. You know, we need workforce housing, so it's not an uncommon problem. It's, and we use some of our, we have a substantial hotel motel occupancy tax revenue stream, I don't know how that is here, but being an attraction for tourists, I would hope that that was benefiting you, and so we use some of those funds to create some opportunities for work, workforce housing. There's all kinds of creative ways you can do that. So I'm thinking, you know, with 98 rooms, banquet hall, you know, add something to it. It's not going to be that many.
If I may?
Yes, please.
98 rooms may not be a lot in Irvine. Do you know how many permanent full-time residents live in this town?
Do I?
Yeah. It's less than 1,500, so 100 hotel units with traffic that it generates is going to be a large number. So my question to you is, did your group consider this village, this town, and consider doing some, a different Hilton product, like a curio collection with a boutique, less number of units with a higher nightly rate, you know, stuck on Hampton?
You know, I think, I think learning about this small town and what it's about and what it means, that sort of the soul of the town, you know, is a late development. You know, they, they, it's not easy to, to get this flag, this Hampton by Hilton, and so I don't think that that was the driving consideration, but it certainly is now. You know, we're, I'm here to learn all about that, been doing a lot of research, you know, quite frankly, when I first heard the name, you know, Blowing Rock, you know, I thought, hmm, that's kind of an odd name, thinking about a rock, you know, it's lagging wind, things like that. So anyway, so I've learned a lot about that. And I've learned that it's a popular destination, you know, that people want to come, you know, people want to come here and experience all that is here. And so, you know, they didn't set out to do a boutique hotel, of course. As you know, this is an expensive construction, you know, with the, with all of the additional treatments on the front, you know, it's not a square box, it's not typical, the old traditional Hampton product. And when you push the development into the hill there, put underground structured parking, you know, it really magnifies the cost of the development. So the, you know, we have boutique hotels in Irving, some, and they're in our old, you know, downtown area, but in the, you know, but as we've grown, you know, of course, again, we have an international airport that we base it. And, you know, this developer is committed, and I know, quite frankly, they know they have to be, you know, to address the concerns of the community. They know they have to do that. And that's part of the reason why, you know, Greg sent me down here, I mean, if Greg were standing here right now, you know, he's a nice guy, he's a smart guy, he makes a good presentation, and when he's, if he saw 60 residents here, he would freeze. He would freeze. Because we all want to make residents happy. And we're learning now some of the things it's going to take to do that, some of the things we can do, and some of the things we won't be able to do, but the effort's been being made for about three years now. And we've got great work from the city.
Let me ask you what I asked the planner. Did you secure a market study to determine whether there is a need for another 98 units in this town? We are a tourist destination, but 100 additional units is a lot for a town this size.
You know, yes, sir. I didn't secure a market study, however, you know, to be able to finance a project like this, market studies are absolutely necessary. So as far as they come with their investment in pre-development processes, I haven't seen the market study, but I can assure you there's one that's been done, and if it's a necessary comfort for you to see that, I'll get it for you. I'll get it for you.
Of course, the town has a vested interest in making sure that anything that gets approved is going to be occupied. We don't want to see a big structure be built and be empty.
And I promise you that Hampton Hilton does not want to see that either.
Let me turn to Ransom Street for a moment. I think I asked, I don't know if I got an answer, did you appeal the DOT denial letter? And how many conversations did you have with DOT?
No, sir. I am not familiar with an appeal process to start with, but secondly, you know, the logic that they provide, you know, with the fact that we have the turn-in onto the street, and then the frontage area is actually so small, there's not even 100 feet, which would be the absolute minimum, to begin another cut-through. So you're going to have people, I mean, if you had that, it'd be a tri, very severe traffic hazard. People turning in, people coming straight, you can also turn in down here, turn in here, and to have that so close together, you know, I hear that kind of stuff from, we have Tex dot, you know, in Texas, from Tex dot engineers all the time, you know, they require a minimum of 350 feet between every, you know, every entryway off of a farm road, you know, that they control.
Well, did you talk to the adjacent property owner about an easement, purchasing an easement to use their curb cut onto 321?
Have not done that yet, but I'll write it down.
Other questions from the board?
The one thing I wanted to ask was...
Yeah, I can. Woody?
Yeah. There, you talked about from the edge of the street, new drainage pipe and structures being installed along Ransom Street to convey storm water into the existing drainage pipe near the road. What, is that going to necessitate closing ramps, Ransom Street while you put those pipe, put that piping in?
Is that going to cause a what?
Closing of that, that portion of Ransom Street.
I don't know. Do you think that's going to cause us to have to close Ransom Street for construction?
But you don't know?
I don't know the answer to that. No? No. Kennerly, do you have anything back on the question?
Traffic control. Just that, traffic control, one lane of traffic while it's being constructed, and all of being constructed during certain hours of the day, that's typical DOT work zone requires.
And Mr. Kennerly's our engineer, he's here.
Other questions?
Yeah, thank you.
Yes.
North, North, North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality has a study out there about the Middle Fork, South Fork, and the new river watershed plant. It is that protected area that feeds into the strains that we're talking about. Are you aware of this plan?
Personally, no. Mr. Kennerly, are we aware of this plan?
I am not. Is it adopted or is it under study?
I can't tell you that. I can tell you it's online through the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality.
We'll check it out. If it's a study, it's not, it's placing.
Okay, well, I appreciate you looking at it. You guys have asked, you have asked for an SIA to increase, to increase the impervious area of the runoff for this, beyond 36%, which may be, I didn't quite catch, it may be even 24%, depending. I just want to read you part of the plan and ask you for comment. The Middle Fork's impairment is influenced by the presence of biological pollutants and ambient chemicals. The Middle Fork runs through several land use areas associated with particular pollutants, specifically the amount of impervious service such as pavement increases rainwater runoff. Rainwater runoff can carry excess nutrients, animal waste, sediment, pesticides, metals, and petroleum. In essence, you are asking to create, continue this problem rather than help fix it by having more impervious service than is allowed in the watershed. I would like you, ask, just you to comment on that.
You know, I noticed that comment in the staff report about the, I think it's 36 to 44 or something like that, and have already asked about that, and so, you can get that note as well. We can make alterations to meet that level, 44%, I mean, 36%. So we've got to go back and do some value engineering on some of the areas, and that we will come into compliance with that number for the impervious allowance.
Thank you.
Anything else? Phil? Question?
I have a few questions, if I may.
Sure.
Do you all currently have a franchise agreement with Hampton Inn and Security?
Yes, we do.
It's interesting that you, I find it interesting that we've got a limited service cold breakfast hotel with a banquet facility. Are there kitchen facilities in the banquet area?
There is a kitchen facility, but it's a warm breakfast.
Only for the, for the hotel's breakfast?
Yeah, well, yes. And it's a warm breakfast, it's a cold breakfast.
Okay. I'm curious about protecting this, this line of sight for the neighbors, and it was going to require a significant amount of buffering, and I'm just wondering if you would consider something more permanent than shrubbery or trees?
Also, saw that comment about an eight-foot masonry screening wall, which we are prepared to line the western longest side of the property, between the single-family homes and the...
That would, that would probably be a rock wall it would load up.
Absolutely.
Is there any particular reason why you chose the Hampton Inn franchise over any others?
You know, I wasn't involved in that decision, and I don't have an answer for that, but I'll find out.
Just curious.
You know, and if you could look it up, it's, it's a top, it's a top flag, you know, in the Hilton family. It great, I mean, it's, they're high quality.
Well, I have... Well, I, I have, I've flown four million miles in my career all over the world, and I've stayed in a lot of hotels. Two hundred and eighty-six nights a year on average. And I wouldn't say the Hampton Inn is the top shelf hotel brand. Not to be argumentative, but it's just, you know.
Yeah, I understand. And I've traveled a lot myself, and I don't stay at Hampton's Hilton because I'm, you know, in poor season.
It's also, I also find it, can we have quiet, please? I also find it interesting that we're combining a limited service hotel with a meeting banquet space with no kitchen. That means that every meeting there's going to be catered? Would that be the case?
Well, given the meeting facilities and the banquet facility, it's not a limited service hotel.
It only serves breakfast, doesn't it, sir?
Oh, they do serve breakfast, but they also have indoor pool and workout facility. You know, conference rooms and, you know, they have lots of amenities that really aren't usually seen in a limited service hotel. So, and, and there's four or five different categories of hotels. I think it's in the third one, you know, and, and then maybe there's two above that. But, but it's definitely not in the limited service category.
Do you have any idea what the breaking, break even point is for the number of rooms you would absolutely need to have in that structure to break even?
To break even? Not sure. I'm going to assume that since it's getting financed, that the pro-nor, performance shows that ninety-eight rooms were. Originally, they came in at a hundred and something and figured out a prudent thing to get down below ninety-nine. So, but if you're asking if there's room for a reduction in the number of rooms, I'll certainly get an answer to that.
Anything, any other information you have for planning board tonight?
Nothing I can think of. You know, again, I came here to learn mostly and so far learned a lot.
Can I ask one more question?
Yes.
First, let me also echo what you said about the Hampton Inn. Not to be argumentative, but I also have traveled quite a bit, and I am a Hilton Honors member. I like Hilton, I would never stay in a Hampton Inn. I have stayed in the Hilton Garden Inn, have stayed in DoubleTree, I have stayed in Curio Collection. Hampton Inn, I think, is the lower of those franchises. My, my question, my question to you is also, I'm concerned about the neighboring residents. I'm assuming there's going to be some lighting on the interior roadways and the outside parking. How is that, I didn't see anything in the plan that would indicate lighting, floodlights.
For light pollution.
Light pollution. I'm concerned with light pollution, noise pollution, light pollution to the adjoining residential.
Mr. Kinley?
The tree plan shows the lighting, the light fixtures.
That are the state codes, the ones that are required by the test.
Okay, so we're, we're meeting the codes. There's lighting you can provide that is directional to mitigate light pollution. We'd be happy to do a lighting study to show what the numbers are in that regard. But from what I understand, we're meeting, you know, what the code is with regards to not having intrusive lighting.
The standard is one foot candle at the property line.
Say it again?
The standard is, and the code is one foot candle at the property line.
Whatever that means.
And how, and how high, and how high are these poles?
It'd be a coach light.
Coach lighting is ten feet, six feet, twenty feet?
Twelve.
Twelve, thank you.
This is like our standard coach lights in town. That's what's used. Now they can have uplighting on the building, or they can have wall packs that would, that will have those. More on the interior, you know, coach.
Okay. Anything else from any of the board? All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I think at this time, it would be appropriate to allow our audience to make some comments. There are a lot of folks that have come and would like to speak. And just, let's put some parameters around, let's just put some parameters around that. It needs to be those of you that are affected in one way or other by this project. And we need to talk not at random and at length, but specifically about this project. And I think it would be fair to have a three-minute limit on the speaking. I think that's fair to get everybody in because we've got a lot of folks here. And, but we want to hear from you, we want to hear what, what's on your mind. And with that, Wayne, if you, I saw your hand come up, I'll let you come up and state your name, your, your address in Blowing Rock for the record, please.
Wayne Miller, four ninety Go Fourth Road.
Speak up, Wayne.
Wayne Miller, four ninety Go Fourth Road. Blowing Rock residents are afraid and they're angry about the direction of development in our community and feel a helplessness that they can't do anything about it. And I can feel that here today. They feel Blowing Rock is moving towards a place they will one day not recognize, and I have seen this before. Many years ago, Jenny and I moved to a small mountain town in northwest Colorado called Steamboat Springs. A town of about five thousand residents. Steamboat was a blend of locally owned small businesses, their families, legacy ranchers, and outdoor enthusiasts, us, with a ski mountain about three miles downtown, from downtown. There was a real sense of community with a small-town charm and character. You were greeted with a smile and conversation when walking in town by friends and others you simply recognized. When entering a business or restaurant, the owners always greeted you by your first name. It was a wonderful place. Shortly after moving there, we became close friends with four couples that had moved there from different parts of the country, and those friendships remain strong today. After three years, Jenny and I moved back east to be closer to family, but the four couples stayed and thrived. They started their careers, bought homes, raised and educated their children, volunteered for charities, sat on boards, took an active involvement in the community, and Steamboat was a better place because they lived there, or on them later. Then around the nineties, the ski mountain was purchased by a large corporation and a massive national and international marketing campaign began. Steamboat was discovered, and with that discovery, the out-of-town developers became showing up, became showing up in droves, and the town was quickly transformed seemingly overnight. Today, there are about six thousand condos in that small town. Virtually every one of them short-term rentals, full short, full of short-term renters with little or no connection to the fiber of the community. Buildings on Main Street have been bought up by hedge funds and private equity firms, and as a result, rents are now so high that the small businesses cannot survive. The small businesses that make Steamboat so special are being replaced by large national corporate brands with high turnover hourly and full employees that don't even know your name and really don't care because the owners live in New York, Chicago, and LA. They can't afford to live in Steamboat, so most are bused from a town forty miles away, so they have no personal atta, or emotional attachment to the community. Main Street has become a shopping mall. What used to be a wonderful community is now gone forever, never to return. Why am I telling you this story? During COVID, Blowing Rock, like Steamboat, was discovered on a national scale. And with this recognition, with this recognition, the out-of-town developers are eyeing our community. Give me about thirty seconds. They want to ride into town, make a quick buck, and get out of town without a care in the world about what they leave behind. Blowing Rock's residents can feel this happening, just look around. We need, as a community, to have a conversation about what type of a town we want to leave our children and grandchildren and create a plan and take steps, any steps, in any length of time necessary to preserve the character and charm of this place we all love. We need to do whatever it takes and do it soon because it can be lost forever so quickly and never to return. Remember the four couples I mentioned earlier? They spent almost their entire adult life in Steamboat. But after retiring, all four of them moved away, saying it wasn't just, it just wasn't a place they wanted to live in anymore. Don't let Blowing Rock become a place we don't want to live in anymore.
Phil, state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, I'm Deborah Weiser. I live on eight four eight Ransom. Raised all our seven kids there. They all went to Blowing Rock, Otaga High School, Appalachian State, and Wake Forest University. I love Blowing Rock. It's my home. Lived there most of my adult life. Ransom Street originally was named after General Matthew Ransom. Not only was he a veteran, he was an ambassador to the state of, the United States, to Mexico. That is what Ransom Street was named after. Ransom Street is a tiny street. We have not sidewalks. Everyone leaves tonight right down Ransom Street. It's beautiful, but it's a small, narrow street. I feel it's substandard, but I've been told different. But it needs to be measured. We've had an accident on there before. People have to jump off the side of the road to get, to walk up and down. People cut through with their dogs and their children because it's a lovely walk. But it's dangerous. Now, the thing I ask everyone here, how does this hotel benefit the citizens of Blowing Rock? Each and every one of you. How does that benefit? When you make your decision and think about it, how does this benefit our town that we love, we cherish, and we want to keep it? It's growing, it's going crazy. From the time I came here with my children, forty-three years ago, I've lived on that street in that house. Ride down Ransom Street and see if it's safe for that big giant hotel they're going to stick on the end of it. Now, hey, if you want to take the Holiday Inn, it has access to three twenty-one. We can't do anything about that. But there's no access on Ransom Street. Where they going to close it off? School buses go up and down that street every day. Children, families with their dogs, old folks love to walk Ransom Street. How many of y'all love Ransom Street? It's one of the... Please, please save our town, our homes, our ransom. We are the citizens, we pay the taxes. And I, if anyone that I've spoke to is for favor of this, I haven't heard anybody that wants this. Do you know anyone, any of your citizens that want this? Speak up, stand strong, we love our town, let's preserve Blowing Rock.
Yes, sir. We'll do this, then we'll come to you next, promise. Come on up.
Hey, everybody. I know most of y'all in this room. My name is Mike Quintero, I live at three forty-two Ransom Street. I've done some life development work on Ransom Street. Not generally going to stand up and talk against development. It's not my slant. But this is ridiculous. Absolutely ridiculous. Ransom Street has been underserved from an infrastructure standpoint for decades. Debbie just spoke about it. It was in the two thousand and seven strategic plan, I believe in the plan before that. Do you, do you know the strategic plan that started for curb better and sidewalk on Ransom Street? At least oh seven, oh seven. And so it's been underserved. To dump this many, Ransom Street's busier than Green Hill. There is a traffic study, by the way. Officer Kirk has it, Chief Kirk, I'm sorry. Oh, my commit. You cannot dump this much traffic on a residential street. It is not safe. Generally, all four property owners' rights to do what they want to do until they start infringing on my rights and my safety. This is not safe, period. Ironically, the parcel next door was for sale at the exact same time, and they could have had an additional two hundred and nine feet on three twenty-one. They chose to just buy this one parcel, not both parcels. That's an interesting decision. Seems like maybe some due diligence should have been done there. In nineteen eighty-six, Holiday Inn was denied access to Ransom Street for safety reasons. They reapplied in twenty eighteen, and they were denied again. If we now give a hotel access to Ransom Street and I'm the Holiday Inn attorney, I'm screaming arbitrary and capricious. It's a legal term that means they're going to sue you for not giving them access. I'm asking y'all to deny this for safety reasons and for legal reasons. It's just not safe.
I don't have any notes because I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but I'm just going to speak from the heart. I think before I say anything, I want to say this is not Irving and this is not Texas. We are Blowing Rock, North Carolina. We're more like a Mayberry. I don't know if you're familiar with Mayberry. But if you bring this hotel in here, we are no longer going to be the Blowing Rock that we all know and love. My family has been coming, I'm fifty-five. My family's been coming here since I was two years old, and we've had a house here for over thirty years. First on Green Hill, now on Main Street. Oh, I didn't say that. I'm at one six seven eight Main Street. There's a reason why we love Blowing Rock, and there's a reason why we keep coming back. And it is that small-town feel, that quaint, sweet town that we all know and love. If we allow this hotel to go up, we're eroding what we're all about. I mean, I don't even know why we're having this discussion. I mean, we're talking about making alterations, changing the design. Look, I don't care if this thing looks like Buckingham Palace or Grove Park Inn, we don't want it there. It doesn't matter what alterations you make. It doesn't matter what the design looks like. I don't care about any of that. We don't want it there. We are setting a precedence now for other big commercial companies to come in. They're going to build more condos, more hotels, more stores, just like Steamboat Springs. We are setting that precedent, and if we do that, our town is over. We love this town. Please do not take this town away from us and what it means to us. We love this town, and you are taking that away from us. That's it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good morning, sir.
Lisa Rossi, one six seven eight Main Street.
Yes, sir.
Hello, my name is Joel Miles. I live at six six seven Ransom Street. And I want to say, I just moved here two months ago. And I fell in love with this place. I know a lot of people, I've had a lot of guys in this room, hometown feel. A small town cannot be duplicated. It's, it's authentic, it's terrific. So I've had the, the good fortune to be able to walk a lot in my last two months here. I walked to Main Street every single day, and every walk starts and ends on Ransom Street. And I will tell you, that road cannot take any more traffic. And I was taught, I was always taught, when you're growing up, walk into traffic, walk on the left side of the road. You can't do it on Ransom. You have to keep going back and forth because there's no curb, there's sharp corners, vegetation. You're not going to just walk around that corner and there'd be a car right in your face. It's, so it's, it's a difficult to, to negotiate as it is. More traffic would just be disastrous. So I want to thank you all for, for welcoming me and my wife into this community. It means a lot to me. And my, my concern definitely is for the safety of people on Ransom.
My name is Gigi Poole. I live at one forty-seven Dogwood Lane, and I think I know most of y'all. I really appreciate first and foremost all the questions that you ask of the developers who have asked for this. And I also know based on Kevin's work that the staff has done an incredible amount of work. The bottom line is though, it is with us, it is with you. You have the power to do the right thing. These are just a few of the things that I heard tonight. I haven't read all that y'all have read. They're asking for a twenty-two percent increase over the watershed imperviousness from thirty-six to forty-four. And your point Brooks made, that it might really be twenty-four and not thirty-six, based on that act. And for the town, has anyone done a study of how much this will cost Blowing Rock? If you have eighty to a hundred and twenty employees, wherever they park. They mentioned workforce housing, we're still in the throes of that. And, and some of you sit on that committee, and that has not been... not been decided. And also, the staff recommendation Mr. Rothrock said about keeping as much of the buffer of greenery, just keep as much as possible. That's pretty subjective. And we're talking about a 90-foot-high edifice? I live in a house that was built in 1937. I have seven oak trees that were planted then, and none of them have reached 90 feet. And they have never been topped off. They have not been affected by utility poles or anything like that, or utility lines. So 90 feet to get vegetation, I want to know what the variety of that tree is, because it will take until long after everyone in this room is dead before it would reach that. And then Mr. Walker asked a question of the staff about, does this proposal meet the current requirements? And some of that was Mr. Cohen asked, too, about retail versus hotel. And Mr. Rothrock's response was, I don't know. There are a lot of unanswered questions. You have the power. You have the power. Do what's right for us, please.
Please.
Hi. I'm Sally Corrigan. I live at 456 Ransom Street with my husband Bob Amos, and we have communicated with you all via an email, I believe Kevin distributed. Okay. I'm Sally Corrigan. I live at 456 Ransom Street, and I walk a lot. I work in a little shop a couple days a week. I love walking on Ransom Street. But I just want to say, if this is allowed, it is significant and permanent.
Hi.
I'm Kathy Conley. I live at 1596 Main Street. But we also happen to own a property that's adjacent to this between the furniture store and the property in question, 8478 Valley Boulevard. And as Mike said, we bought our property right about the same time. They were both for sale at the same time. I have a couple of questions. I know my questions will not be answered, but I just kind of put them out there as questions. As a town whose economy is built on the great outdoors, that's why you want to build a hotel here, because people want to go hiking, tubing down the river, we should be being progressive on things to protect the river, to protect the environment as it's affected by light pollution. It may just be a study, but if it's forward-thinking, that's where we should be. The impervious surface extension on this is really not where we should be going. The town continually has stormwater issues, never mind what we saw during COVID. The size and all, well, you can imagine my opinion on that. My other question is about the construction process itself with the multiple levels underground. Will you be blasting? Have you done a geological study? I know we ran into huge veins of granite. We chose not to blast. What are you going to do, and how will that affect all the neighbors? Why would you build a retaining wall or a visual field on one side, one property line, and not the other? You're surrounded on both sides by residences. And, you know, the comment about the Holiday Inn, Ransom Street is going to become an access for two hotels, and that's all it'll be. Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
I do appreciate Kevin for dealing with my calling him every six months over the last three years to say, hey, when they going to tear down that old house? I'm tired of picking up shingles off my front lawn, so...
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
I'm Bob Amos, 456 Ransom. You already heard it from the smartest person in the house. Well, actually, our lab is maybe the smartest. But I'll tell you, in a nutshell, this project is not right for this town. Pure and simple. But I just want to speak to the traffic quickly. I mean, we've been here going on seven years now, backing out in Ransom. We live up closer to Church Street. It's an exciting trial every morning. And getting down to the four-way stop sign, that's a Mexican standoff with who's going when, and you have people running it. You don't need to feed more traffic into that. But it's just, it is just not right. And I think we know it in our soul. You guys know it, you feel it. It will hurt this town, and it'll be an albatross sticking out there like a sore and festering thumb.
Yes, in the back. At the entrance. Yo, in. Come on up.
Hi. I represent Chautauqua Resort and Chautauqua Lake. First, I want to thank this board for staying late and listening to all our concerns, and also to Kevin and his great team for all the work they do. On top of the flaws and deception of this ill-conceived project, the central request before the board tonight is straightforward and decisive. The planning board is required to reject TRIP Hospitality Special Use Permit because it violates the town's unified development ordinance. The UDO adopted pursuant to state watershed protection laws mandated by the Watershed Protection Act of 1989, sets a cap of 36% for impervious surfaces, and in some cases is 24%. While the developer proposes installing detention systems, the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality has consistently held that detention systems do not change detention of built-upon area, or the definition of built-upon area. Again, the cap is a hard maximum, not a guideline. Blowing Rock is no stranger to the consequences of insufficient water protection. Dredging can easily cost in the hundreds of thousands, and dredging is not a one-time expense, it is a recurring expense. I'll remind you that the water from this project runs to Chautauqua Lake. This project would exacerbate those costs with the burden falling squarely on our community. If this board were to neglect to reject that permit, you would be making a quasi-judicial decision unsupported by the evidence. The only lawful course is to reject this SUP. Again, thank you to this board for your diligence and commitment to our town.
I'll make this quick. I love Blowing Rock. I especially am enamored by our little street ransom. Having lived in or adjacent to some very low-to-no-trust societies, I've had years to process just what makes our little slice of heaven just so special and so different. We have every economic class represented in some way, in some cases, multiple ways. We mostly live in such peace and harmony with each other that sometimes I wonder if it's all really this good. Well, for us, it is just as good and rare. But many other neighborhoods cannot claim the same. Crime, abject poverty, social ills, deaths of despair, all these are the character traits of low-trust societies. Knock on wood, we can claim and proudly say that us ransom residents are part of a larger high-trust society. But it is true that a high-trust society usually comes with a high tax base city, and that usually is part and parcel to higher levels of commercial development, but that results in better protection, better education, safer streets, high employment, usually. All equate to a high-trust, character-rich community in which most, if not all, benefit greatly. And this alone results in more people interacting, helping each other, and otherwise being a healthy part to a greater and more productive whole. Even our pets are a part of each other's lives. But any and all development, no matter what, is turning us into a quasi mini metropolis in the mountains with very limited land availability. What we have now in 2025 is quite rare than most optimists would believe. Too many places are simply not like this. We have something very rare and precious in our little world over here. And so we put all of our life, love, and effort into our own homes and neighbors' lives. For many of us, these are our only homes, no backups. We talk in the street as there are no sidewalks here, and the kids quickly becoming teens are actively all over the place as well as they should be. The Hampton Inn is built at the 321 end of Ransom. Not only will it mean much higher congestions, as their GPS will take them through Chestnut, Henkel, and then Ransom in many cases, it could very well be quite dangerous to the residents who may become victims of speeders on a narrow, curvy road. And the hotel would no doubt greatly amplify the pedestrian foot traffic as well. This is a very bad idea. We need to preserve what we have in terms of the soul of our tiny town. I am most decidedly not anti-development. I'm very pro-entrepreneurial. I'm a proud capitalist, and I recognize and respect the principles of growth and expansion. But I feel we need to perhaps pull in the reins just a bit on what our town is becoming. Do we even know? Is there a grand plan? Please reconsider other options to maximize the comfort and safety for as many Ransom Street residents and potential Hampton Inn patrons as can possibly be done. Thank you for your time, and God bless our 21st century Mayberry.
Anyone else? Yes, please. And I'll get to you next, ma'am, in the back.
My name is Dana Guzzo. My husband, Robert, and I live at 1771 Main Street. We've lived in Blowing Rock three years, full-time. We're here tonight to speak out against the Hampton Inn Hotel at 986 Ransom. This isn't just about a building for us, it's not about the brand for us, it's about the future of Blowing Rock, whether we will honor a vision that the town has already committed to. In preparing for tonight, we spent a lot of time studying the comprehensive plan that was prepared. On February 13th, 2024, for those of you who may not know, the town of Blowing Rock adopted a comprehensive plan that very accurately reflects the values of our community. That plan emphasizes preserving our small-town character, it talks about protecting our natural resources, and it ensures, and ensuring that new development fits the scale and spirit of Blowing Rock, all things that I think we've heard echoed here tonight in various ways. The plan also states that you will facilitate growth that complements the character of our town. It's important to state here that Bob and I are not anti-growth. We're pro-smart growth and pro-growth that's consistent with that comprehensive plan. We believe that proposed Hampton Inn is not smart growth. We do not believe it is consistent with the comprehensive plan. In fact, in many ways, it directly contradicts that plan. And I would go one step further to say that many of the questions you all have asked have, of course, been spot-on. But it also, the Hampton Inn exasperates many of the problems that were laid out in that comprehensive plan as things that the town knew they had to work on. So just for a few specifics, let's start with scale. A hotel of this size on a two-acre lot at the corner of Valley and Ransom Street will dramatically increase traffic, noise, and the pressure on our infrastructure. In addition, it's just incompatible with the existing residential and small-business environment in that neighborhood that Landry so eloquently talked about. Second, the plan prioritizes protecting our watershed and our natural beauty. A large-scale commercial development, we risk runoff, we risk pollution, and then long-term environmental degradation that we can't even really know today. Third, the comprehensive plan spells out a shared vision of the town as a town that welcomes all with its charming authenticity and its unique sense of place. A national chain like Hampton Inn does not contribute to the unique charm that draws people to Blowing Rock. It threatens to homogenize our town, to undermine its authenticity and its unique sense of pledge, all those things we've all, our unique sense of place, all those things that we've all pledged to protect. We believe the town can continue to welcome visitors. Of course, the town should continue to welcome visitors, they're our lifeblood. But it can do so without sacrificing its culture and its character. We can support tourism without turning our town into a commercial corridor. We can honor that comprehensive plan, not just as a document that was worked on years ago, but as a promise to ourselves and to the future generations that will love and cherish Blowing Rock as we all do. So we urge the planning board to reject this proposal. Please stand by the vision that you adopted in 2024, and let's protect Blowing Rock. Thank you.
You're back?
Hi. My name is Even Light Eagles, and I live at 612 Ransom Street. And I'm really nervous to talk. I wasn't planning on speaking this evening. I have something specific I want to share. Living on Ransom Street, you know, it's hard enough for me to go 20 miles an hour on Ransom Street, and 20 miles an hour is an appropriate speed limit for Ransom Street. And so if you add a bunch of people who aren't from around here, like having access like that, I just, they're not going to be going the speed limit, and it is going to be dangerous, I believe. The idea of the cul-de-sac, I appreciate this man's attempt to work with us, you know, and try to figure out ways that he can make it work. I get that. You know, everybody has a right to try to make some money, and you're, you know, why not get a slice of Blowing Rock, right? It's a little paradise, and I get that. And, you know, no offense, but it's just, I just don't see a way that you can do it that's going to match Blowing Rock. I just don't see a way that you can do it. But back to my other point was that with Ransom, like, say, like, you add a cul-de-sac, like, the idea, I appreciate that idea, but like, then Church Street's going to get hammered. Like, there's not a way, I don't think that you can make it work for traffic to be safe if you add that level of traffic. So that's one thing. I like the idea of looking more deeply into the whole wetlands thing. If you, like, there's, there are so many springs on Ransom Street, like Wet Weather Springs, and I just, digging that deep into the ground there, like, there's, I just don't know a way that it's not going to be affecting... I mean, I don't know about development, I'm really, you know, I know about flowers. But, um, so, anyway, and then the other thing is, yeah, just to y'all, I think a lot of times we get, we talk about what we don't want Blowing Rock to become, but, and then I, the comprehensive plan, I think I should, you know, maybe reget more and understand it better. But you were asking about some questions about, like, is there a limit? Like, are there any limits? Like, I don't know, like, what do we have in place? Like, what parameters do we have in place? Because, like, on Ransom Street, I live, like, across from King's Ransom, and that was, that was a pasture when I was a kid, and my granddad would go down and milk the cow every morning and evening, and, you know, it's changing, and there's no way around it, but what do we want to change it towards? You know, like, what do we want? And so I just, I'm just wondering about that question. I really wanted to hear an answer, and I don't know, you know, how to answer, because everything depends on, you know, how big they're going to be in setbacks, but how big can we make things? And like, how are we going to limit it? How does that work? So I'm just throwing that out there.
Thank you for coming.
Hi. I'm Paula Seams. I live at 117 Grove Way, the cul-de-sac there. That's my house, right there. So I'm a little terrified of, of course, the blasting, the noise, the, I hadn't thought of what y'all said earlier about the lighting coming on my house and all that kind of stuff. I moved here from Texas 13 years ago, so I get that everything's bigger in Texas, but I agree, I think it's a little bit too large for my angle. That's my house, so that's all.
Thank you.
Hey. Sarah Murphy, 175 Heritage Lane for 20 years. I just want to make two points. This woman back here spoke about wanting to know things, and I'm sure you're frustrated if this has been going on for three years and you're just hearing all this. I would love to ask you all to maybe offer a half-day workshop, something like that, so we can understand better as residents, because some of, y'all have been having conversations for three years, and we're all just hearing about it. And so people do feel frustrated or helpless, like you talked about, Wayne. So I wanted to make that request. I know you can't answer me now, but I'm asking for that. And the second thing that no one has mentioned, and I live on Heritage, so on the other side of 321, but the property value on Ransom, the property value for the homeowners on Ransom Street and around there, you're living so, so close to it, that's got to be taken into consideration. of 321, but the property value on Ram, the property value for the homeowners on Ransom Street and around there, you're living so, so close to it, that's got to be taken into consideration. Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Margaret, and I live at 134 King's Drive, and I'd like to address some of the concerns that I have. I've lived in that house for over five years, and these are some of the things that I've We do need studies telling us what our vulnerabilities are, and those haven't been done yet. And they should probably be done with every proposed project, because it's going to change the landscape. Where are these folks going to eat and park? Because people got to eat. What about pedestrian traffic, which is really, really bad? Henkel can't handle the traffic it currently has. Actually, the street appears to be buckling. Please place signage identifying residential neighborhoods, so people will be cognizant of that when they drive through. Chestnut, Ransom, Henkel, and Morris all need signage. Do some type of traffic study to determine the safety of all golf carts and e-bikes. Why isn't the speed limit on 321 being enforced, also Main Street and Sunset? The pedestrian traffic is insane. People just step right out into traffic. They're not looking because they're too busy texting and taking pictures. Traffic is getting backed up so they can do these activities. They do not live here, and they're not cognizant of the problems that they create. Signs proclaiming pedestrian light of way send a very mixed message when paired with signage directing pedestrians to stop walking and allow access for cars. If the red hand is displayed, you do not walk. Please do something about the four-way stop on Ransom, as someone else suggested. No one stops there. And I'm suggesting that those yellow painted strips that make a loud noise and force you to slow down be installed. It wouldn't be a speed bump. They're flat. I'm also going to suggest something that may be controversial. We need a convenience fee. No more permits until that fee is set. This expense needs to be passed on to the folks profiting from them or enjoying benefits. They in turn can pass it on to their clientele. This should help pay for upgrades to infrastructure, which we need. The residents certainly shouldn't be saddled with that. It's the people who are guests who are creating the problem. Let them be responsible for the cost of resolving it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else?
Yes, sir.
David Huckabee, 891 Ransom Street. We live directly across from where this hotel is proposed to be built. We're in a low spot. We already have flooding issues. Our property is flooded all of the time. This will create so many more problems, it will also devalue our property tremendously. We've already talked to a realtor about it. No way in hell do I want this thing approved. I'm sorry. That's all I'm going to say.
Dennis Diaz, 869 Ransom, right next to my neighbor. And he is right. It does flood. I just moved here eight months ago with my wife, and she does a lot of entertainment up here. We've been coming up here for years, and she's always done entertainment up here. We've always had a dream of living in Blowing Rock because of the atmosphere here, and I know a lot of you. And I'm here to tell you, I'm a young guy. I had an incident. I've only been here eight months, and I learned real quickly, around that curve right there, I had a garbage can, and the garbage can went out from underneath me from somebody speeding down that street and almost got in altercation with them. It was an outer-towner. So yes, it is very unsafe walking that street. It will cause some deadly stuff to happen if more traffic goes down there, because, yes, people do not, outer-towners especially, they do not. I sit on my porch, and I have grandkids, and I get on to people all the time. I get outside when I see them flying down that road, and I'm in the road already trying to get them to slow down. So it will cause more traffic to go down that road, and it is a safety hazard. And I'm a young guy, and I got good reflexes, and let me tell you something. People fly down that road, and I'm, I'm just new to the area, and I'm a Miami boy, and let me tell you something, they fly down Ransom.
Anyone else in the audience? We want to make sure everybody that wants to speak has an opportunity to speak tonight. Okay?
Before we get to what I think you're getting to, the applicant, do you want to add anything before we end the conversation there?
I apologize. I'm from Texas. Y'all made me give my address. You know, I've heard a lot, and quite frankly, one of the things we've heard about that, that, first of all, Ransom's got some issues. I don't know if we can help with that or not. Maybe we can. You know, further on extending from our property. You know, of course, there's a limit of what we can do, but I'm open to everything. And, you know, this issue with the percentage of the impervious, repurposed, whatever it is, that needs to be resolved, and it can be resolved. I believe that's the only component, I could be corrected, that we are not 100% conforming with the requirements for an SUP. That's what I've heard. I could ask, or would ask, for a chance to bring back a better product. First, ones that meets to the, to the letter, the requirements, and then additionally, whatever we can come up with, that will attend to some of the things that I've recorded in my notes here and listened to. I don't know if it's going to make a difference or not. With some people, it certainly won't. And I think the effort here is to get the best from the better. I mean, you know, property owners, you know, this is a commercially zoned business piece of property. So, so, I mean, do I have any considerations? Because I own, because I own the property, you know, and bought it with the zoning on it and proposing a hotel right across the street from another hotel? So, so again, and I'm not, I don't want to be arguing, arguing about anything I heard, you know, however, you know, everybody's speaking from the heart in the fact that they're property owners in the area, and we are too. And there'll be somebody come behind us, and maybe I can chop some floors off of the Hampton by Hilton. I don't know. But if you, if you would like to engage in the opportunity as, as the property owner, I'd like the chance to make it better. So I don't know if we're allowed to postpone, and even there was mention of a, sort of a community-type meeting, which we could do once we make provisions. Again, not sure it's going to make a difference with some. But if it, but if it is such that, you know, we, we have this right, you know, because we do it according to the code, I think it should be as good as it can be. And, you know, I haven't driven down Ransom, I'll admit. I planned to get here early today to do all that, but the airport was crazy and it almost killed me. But I'll be back many times, as long as this is an active project, you'll see me again. So if that's allowed, I'd like to ask for us to not make a decision tonight and give us a chance to fix what's wrong and alter in some ways areas that we can make it better, if I'm allowed that.
Any other questions or remarks from the board? Or are you doing? Would it be appropriate to go ahead and go to closing comments? Let's do that.
Don't you need a motion before we have comments?
Not yet. Not yet.
You don't need a motion before comments?
Well, they're just doing closing comments.
Yeah, they're doing closing comments.
And then what's it?
Right. And it's after closing comments. Any closing comments from staff? Any closing comments from the applicant? Okay. At this point, we're going to close the evidentiary section of the permit review, and the board will begin discussion of the case, and shortly will probably have a vote. I want to say thank you to everybody for coming out. This is a remarkable crowd, and we wanted to give everybody that wanted to say something an opportunity to speak, and we greatly appreciate your attendance tonight. We also have a petition, I understand it, that has been presented, and we need to make sure that we recognize that petition and recognize it for the record. Do we need to read the petition?
It's, it's.
She has the petition.
Can we summarize that petition? Do you want somebody to?
Sure. Do you want to summarize? Well, yeah, I think we'll be, definitely, if you guys could. And then also, here's our copy that was provided to the applicant. That was on, do you want to look at that as well before that is entered into the record?
I don't need you to read it. Okay. So I've got several sheets of signatures here. The following names are individuals that are signing this enclosed petition against the proposed Hampton Inn located at Ransom Street Highway 321 in the town of Blowing Rock. And there's one page, two page, two full pages of signatures, and about seven, six or seven on another page, and then another page that's got a number of signatures, 15 or so, and another page of signatures, probably 25 to 30. So one, two, three, four, five pages of signatures on the petition. We'll make that a part of tonight's record. Any other questions from the board? In looking at the project, and looking at the hearing, and looking at the process, there's five items that are considered when looking at a project like this, and these are issues for council to consider. But I'd like to read these as we go towards the closing of the vote. The commission, each of the following findings have to be made in findings of fact. The use of the development is located, designed, and proposed to be operated so as to maintain or promote the public health, safety, and general welfare of the town. The use or development complies with all required regulations and standards of the land use ordinance and variances thereto, if any, and with other applicable regulations. The use or development is located, designed, and proposed to be operated so as to be compatible with the particular neighborhood in which it is located. The use or development will not substantially injure the value of the adjoining or abutting property. The use or development conforms with the general plans for the physical development of the town as embodied in the ordinance, the town of Blowing Rock Comprehensive Plan, and/or any other duly adopted plans of the town. Those are the considerations. So what I would like to do at this point is close the evidentiary section and close the review process. I think we need to have some board discussion if there's any questions or comments from the board after presentation from any matter. We have three items that we need to decide on and vote on tonight. The first one is, is whether or not, I guess we would need a motion that the application is complete as entered?
Or the opposite, or some, yeah. It doesn't have to be that necessarily, but it has to address that issue, whether the application is.
So we, Kevin, the application is complete? Okay?
Just a question. Yeah. Yeah. Joey, is a motion to recommend, for the planning board to recommend that the Board of Commissioners vote to table this until questions are, certain questions are answered, is that an appropriate motion?
Yes. Yeah, so at this point, you can either vote for, you can vote against, you can vote to table, vote to table it to a future meeting, which I think will be this October 16th.
The next, yes, the next planning board meeting is October the 16th, and one of the options is to table this tonight to gather additional information, and it comes up at the next meeting.
And then if we do, so if there is a motion to table it, you would also want to incorporate within that motion our request to town council to continue their public hearing to allow you guys enough time to gather more information.
Okay.
May I?
Yes, please.
At some point. I do think there are certain ordinances that are in violation. I don't know when the appropriate time is to bring those up and discuss.
That would be now.
Now? Okay, let's talk about it. We've already talked about the 36% VUA, which would be section, Steve, you're going to love this. We're going to do a lot of this tonight. 16-16, decimal 38, decimal 3, decimal 2, which is, they're asking for the special intensity I think they're, obviously, they're in violation of that unless we offer it to them. Also want to take a very close look, if you will bear with me, 1612. 6, decimal 8, decimal. The permit issuing authority may authorize the construction of a building, one or more sides of which exceed the building height limitations as set forth in 61267, which is the 50-foot elevation with the setbacks. If it finds that, one, the height of the building measured at the front side does not exceed the building height limitations, we've established that, and the other sides of the building exceed building height limitations because the building is constructed on a severe grade. So look for a definition of a severe grade. AI says that that is local, determined based upon slope. Now, so question four, which I sent to you guys. Now, so, question four, which I sent to you guys regarding a question to the department, Development Department, question four says, I asked, "What is Boiling Rock's preliminary determinance of your grade? Does this property qualify, and how was it determined?" The answer I received was, "I don't know what this means, or what requirement this is from. This lot does not appear to be steep," which means in my mind that the northwest side of 72 feet is in violation of the 50-foot limit. So my point is, I think this is a building violation of the ordinance.
To me, I think that goes back to what I said, that we need more information from town and from the board.
But the reason I'm bringing this up is we're charged with two things tonight. One, make sure the applicant is complete, application is complete, and two, that it's in ordinance. I'm bringing up this ordinance before the board at this time, so that we all understand that there probably are issues with the ordinance and with this development.
Rather than probably and maybe, should we not go back to Kevin, let him research this and come out with some answers?
Or we put it in, and we say we deny based upon this, and let them fight it out?
If we make, let me understand, if we make a motion tonight to deny, or it goes to the council, and then the council can deal with it, and the applicant has heard our concerns and can address those before the council meeting? Correct?
That's reasonable.
And, and is it appropriate to make that motion now, or do we have to do something else at this point?
I'm not having more, by the way.
Well, you've already given us enough.
Well, I mean, I know, but I'm not, I mean, suppose this doesn't hold water, and there's other issues that I might think are.
Do we have other issues present?
Okay.
Can we speak at the council meeting?
Uh, no, the public hearing is tonight.
Public hearing is.
This is not, sorry.
Yeah, this is not a public hearing. The public hearing is at a later meeting.
You can't speak at the council meeting.
All right, under, all right, under A of what we just discussed, promote the public health, safety, and general welfare. Again, I think public health, we've addressed, the public safety, I think we heard it loud and clear tonight, maybe there's not an ordinance specifically requiring a traffic study, but I think you can get it under this by saying that it does affect public safety. So I would request a traffic study as well.
As part of your recommendation to town?
To town, that's correct.
So why would we not do that before we send this up to town council?
Again, I'm just trying to.
I understand what you're doing, I'm just trying to, I'm pointing out what I'm thinking.
Say it again, I'm sorry, I didn't catch.
I'm still thinking that we need to table this until we get answers to these questions.
I, I don't think we table anything. I think we go after this and we can get all our concerns out there and let them work it. I don't think tableting's going to do anything, except kick the can down the road.
And you have other items?
I do. Um, section, again, Steve, I know you love me for this. Yeah, I know you do. All right, just on the next page, 12-11, section 16-12, decimal 6, decimal 9, B. Developments of the non-residential zoning districts that require a special use permit, the Board of Commissioners may authorize the construction of a building, one or more sides with building height limitation, we just talked about this, but B says, "The building will be designed, located, and constructed so that it does not unreasonably obstruct the view of owners or occupants of other property, and is not otherwise substantially out of character with the size, scale, and appearance of other buildings within the immediate neighborhood." We have no information whatsoever about this.
Go ahead and look at that dumpster.
So, that is one thing, I think that we don't have any information, so in my mind, that means the application is not complete, not necessarily denied. Let me keep going. They also, just for the scale issue, the Hampton Inn is requesting approximately 67,500-square-foot hotel with another 73,000-square-foot parking garage, which one-third of it is underground. So, in total, it's approximately just shy of, what, 140,000 square feet. For scale, Furniture Gallery, Boiling Rock Furniture Gallery right next door, 16,000 All right, D, uh, what, if you'll read that for me, it says, "The use or development will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property." 16, Stevie boy, 1621, on a commercial design, 1621, decimal 1, which is page 21-1. C and G, C says, "Protecting property values and preserving natural environment, the unique character and aesthetic integrity." G states, "To preserve and improve property values to protect public and private investment." I haven't heard a single thing about how this is going to hurt or help property values of the neighborhood. So, in my mind, again, it's not, it's not complete, not necessarily denied, this one's just not complete because we don't have any information. All right, E, "The development conforms with the general plans for the physical development of the town as embodied in this ordinance, the Town Boiling Rock Comprehensive Plan." 1621, decimal 3. B and E, B says, "Visual impact. No public and private projects should be visual, uh, sorry, new public and private impacts should be visually appealing, compatible with the mountain setting, and compatible with other development in the surrounding area." E, "Streets, buildings, and parking lots should enhance the mountain environment by preserving and providing pleasant views and appropriate geographic orientations." I do not believe in my mind that this sat, that this development satisfies that particular And lastly, supporting language from the vision statement which you heard earlier, I am going to quote directly from the Boiling Rock Comprehensive Plan, says that, that this is directly from that, "Supporting our vision with a focus on preserving its historical downtown quaint neighborhoods and the natural beauty of the mountain landscape, Boiling Rock will facilitate growth that complements the character of the town." Subjective, but I believe it complements. Those are my concerns, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Based on that, should we entertain a motion that this is an incomplete application? Is that appropriate?
I mean, that's up to you guys, however you want to make a motion, but yeah, I would address that first issue in, in some capacity.
All right. Do we have a motion that states that the application is incomplete?
I'd, I'd like to state a motion that the application is incomplete.
I'll second it.
Second?
And I'll second it.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, let's entertain a motion as to a decision on whether to approve, or disprove, or deny.
I'll make a motion that we recommend denial.
I hear your motion, and we'll get to that in a second. I would like to address that second point, though, as far as being in compliance with the code. Because we voted on the actual application, and I'd like to do a similar vote for whether it's in compliance with land use code. Before we get to the final. So if the person that made that motion would consider withdrawing that, that way we could address the second one?
You could make him, I'll withdraw the motion for now, you can make another motion that it's not complete and not in compliance.
I'll make the. I'll, I'll withdraw, excuse me, excuse me, I'll withdraw the motion.
All right.
I'm getting up here, I'm getting up.
All right, now do we have a motion that says that it is not in compliance with land use code?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
There's discussion first, without further information, I can't vote yes.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
Any other discussion?
I have a question.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Opposed?
Opposed.
All right, now do we have a motion as to whether to approve or, or deny?
And one thing that would exact to this, either whatever decision is made, you would need to state reasoning for that, specific reasons for that, so if you want to incorporate that into the motion, that way it gives town council a more informed.
Okay.
If I could make that motion again, based on concerns over scale and massing of the building, concerns over adverse impact to parking and traffic on Main Street, concerns over the number of units in the hotel, safety concerns over access to Ransom Street with no sidewalks, concerns over noise to adjoining single-family homes, concerns over light pollution to adjoining single-family homes, concerns over stormwater runoff, concerns over diminished value of adjoining properties, I would make a motion that we recommend denial.
Second motion? All in favor of denial? Discussion, any discussion?
For the record, I still would think that tabling this so that we can have all those questions answered, before it goes in front of council, is what makes the most sense to me.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? All in favor of denial?
Our job is to have a complete record.
So just, if I could have order, please, if I can have order just for a moment, please understand that this planning board has the authority to either recommend approval or denial of a project. We do not have final answer, and that is the town council's decision. We simply send our recommendation to town council, and, and we will send the recommendation of denial to the town council.
When is the town council going to?
It would be on the agenda, I'm not sure when that would be, probably second, probably the second, the second Tuesday in October, but we don't know the schedule yet.
And can the citizens come then?
Yes.
And can we talk?
Yes.
Oh, good.
Yeah. Hold up, hold up, hold up. The council will allow coming, hold up. First of all, first of all, we don't know if this project will go forward to the October meeting, so don't have an expectation. If it goes to October, if the applicant prepares their information and goes to October, there'll be a notice, be a notice in the paper, there'll be a notice to those within 150 feet of the property. So, we'll, we'll find out that soon. Second part is, who can speak? Right. Different from tonight, and Joey can maybe add more to the, but tonight is, the planning board is advisory only, and is a lot more open, and that's why everybody got an opportunity to speak, there's a lot more latitude given. The council meeting is for those that have standing, it's not for people that live outside of town, on the other side of town, it's those that have standing or have, or would be directly impacted, and, and that, there is a little bit of distance from the property that would, where you'd have an impact.
Would that be all residents on Ransom Street?
I don't think so. I mean, I don't think so.
Why would you say, Kevin?
Because we have to register when we can, before we can talk.
No, 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 hold up.
Well, as far as determining standing, we're not going to do that tonight. We're not going to make any decisions about any people tonight. That's a decision that needs to be made at the public hearing, so that is not something that we are going to talk about right now.
And, it's sworn testimony, those that will speak, myself, engineers and representatives of the, of the applicant, and those that are going to speak, even if it's a town engineer, they, you'll be sworn testimony, expert witnesses, and it's a little bit different from what we did tonight. Does that, I understand? All right?
Yeah, I mean, it is exactly like Kevin said, it's more formal process, there's introducing evidence and things like that, it's more akin to a court hearing, as opposed to what we did tonight, which was an informal discussion.
And if I could echo what you were saying, Kevin, I don't think this will be prepared to go back to the council by October meeting, because we've raised a lot of concerns, the applicant needs time to try to answer all the questions, and so I, I wouldn't anticipate this coming any earlier than November or December.
Any other old business to discuss tonight?
None.
Any, any committee reports to discuss?
No, no committee reports, nothing else.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
All in favor?